Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. This is our first planning commission meeting of the year. The time is 6:32 PM, and we are now calling the Inxter Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Commissioner Chisholm.
Present.
Commissioner Willis. Absent or excused?
Absent.
Absent. Commissioner T. Williams.
Present.
Commissioner A. Williams, present. Commissioner Davis.
Excused.
Excused. Commissioner McDaniel.
Excused.
Commissioner Hall. Absent.
Yep.
And Commissioner Hayes Bradford.
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. We're down to item number two, adoption of the agenda. And also for the general public, if anyone is looking for an agenda, I believe they are here on the table, Mr. Daddell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you need to grab an agenda for tonight's meeting, they're here at the table. We're down to item number two, adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda before you?
Yes.
Alrighty. Is there any additions or subtractions from this agenda? Hearing and seeing none, all in, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda, as is.
So moved.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number three, adoption of minutes. Item 3A, adoption of November 25th, 2024 joint meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from November 25th, 2024?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, are there any additions or subtractions? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the minutes for November 25th, 2024 joint meeting.
To move second.
It's been properly moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number four. This is the first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing. Of course, tonight, our agenda item, aside from the planning commission calendar, is talking about the site plan for our special land use. For John, uh, 3700 John Daly Road. Except there's, um, there's really nothing else, so if anyone wanted to speak to the planning commission meeting calendar at this time, feel free to approach the podium and do so. Other than that, once the floor is open for a public hearing, you will have an opportunity to speak about 3700 John Daly Road. Alrighty, hearing none and seeing no movement, we're down to item number five, public hearings. Case number 01-253700, John Daly Road, special land use. This is a public hearing for proposed upgrade of a utility and public service building without storage yard located in a R-1B, one-family residential zone district. A special land use is required for the proposed use per section 155.041(c)(4). The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open a public hearing.
It's been properly moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Daddell, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As stated, this is a special land use and a site plan for 3700 John Daly, for the facility, um, in a residential area. So, it's, uh, in a zoning R1B residential, the applicant is the city of Inxter. The owner is the city of Inxter. On the map that's being shown is the location, is at the corner, the southwest corner of Carlisle and John Daly. Um, the remaining, the east, northeast, south and west, um, on the east, the, um, the site is, um, directly across from, right here, is a single-family A. And the remaining ones surrounding it is single, um, excuse me, R1B. So this facility, um, this is what currently exists there, it's a, um, excuse me, I have something in my throat. Uh, existing pump station that is in the right of way on Carlisle. And to the, to the, the left of it, or, or south of it, is a vacant lot where they're proposing to put the new process. It's not necessarily, um, it's more of a structure than it is a building. And so it's, that's what they're proposing to do. It has landscaping, it has two off-street parking, and things of that nature. We, when we look at the site plan and things of that nature, we look at, um, nine things. Is it harmonious with the master plan and things of that nature? And then reviewing it, it does, um, fit, um, number one, harmony with the master plan. It's harmony with existing character as it currently stands, it's a vacant lot. It would be building a structure that's going, that has been designed to fit in with the residential area. And the applicants are here also that can, um, speak on it a little bit more. This is, um, how the building, the structure will be, um, designed from the north, south, east and west elevations. Um, they, they put a lot of effort in trying to make it look, um, fit into a neighborhood. It's, um, 2,016 square feet, one-story. The majority of the stuff is, is designed under, underground. So that it wouldn't stand over, um, the remaining houses in the neighborhood. Very quickly, this is basically my, my, from reviewing it and going through the ordinance, my recommendation would be to accept the special land use. Because it does not have a, a, um, storage unit, which is one of the requirements for special land use in a single-family residential area. It fits, um, a need for the master plan, which is to provide services for the, the, the city as a whole. And, um, I recommend, um, approving it. And as far as the site plan, there's a couple of things that can be done internally that, that need to be correct. One in particular is that they are proposing a nine-foot-high wall for the structure. Uh, unfortunately, the way our site plan, the way that the ordinance is written, we only allow for a six-foot-high, um, wall. So they would either have to correct it, uh, revise it to make it a six-foot wall, or they would have to seek a variance for three feet. Um, it's my understanding that the reason the wall was gonna be that high is, it was, one, it's safety. And, and two, it allows, um, a more muff, to muffle any potential sounds that the generators would produce. And as I stated, um, the applicant is here if you had any other questions.
Alrighty, thank you. Guess our representatives, from the city, please approach. And then, of course, this is a public hearing, so after they speak, we will open it up to the general public for your comments or questions.
Good evening.
Good evening. Was there any other information that you would like to add to what Mr. Daddell has already presented to this body?
Um, just, just that the nine-foot wall, um, screens a generator, which is quite large. Um, and the generator is almost seven feet tall.
I'm sorry, for the general public, can you all just introduce yourselves for those who may or may not know either one of you?
Jerome Beavens, Department of Public Service Director for the city of Inxter.
Carrie Smalley, consultant engineer for DPS.
Thank you. And you said the wall regarding, uh, the, the generator?
Yes, so the generator's behind the building, and the wall screening it is a little bit taller than the generator to both screen it from, for visual purposes as well as for sound purposes.
Gotcha. Alrighty, at this time, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
I know that it's being, this is gonna be, um, built on a vacant lot next to what, where the old pump station is, right? Is the old pump station gonna be demolished?
Yes.
Okay. That was just my question.
Ready, anybody else from this body? Oh, you're good. Just touch it, touch the center, there you go.
Okay, Mike, I heard about the generator, it sounds like a big deal. Is that gonna be like a really noisy situation going on over there?
Um, well, it, it could be. Um, the generator's only gonna work when there's no electricity, it's a backup. So if the structure loses power, if the city loses power, then the generator would come on. It would also come on one hour, one day a week, just to make sure that everything's working okay. Um, but for the most part, it wouldn't be working at all.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, and, go right there.
So I'm looking at the structure of this building, is this similar to what, is that Inxter Park?
No.
Okay.
You're talking about the CSO base?
Yeah.
No, that's a more modern.
Okay. That's all.
Alrighty, anybody else? Alrighty, um, again, this is a public hearing, so anyone that is here from the general public who seeks to have any comments or questions, please approach the podium at this time. State your first and last name for the record, and begin with your question or comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Vanilla Williams, I live at 3630 John Daly, which is the third house north of Carlisle. And because I am not mechanically inclined, so what's sitting there now is actually not gonna be there, that pump station? Is that what you're saying? So the whole, well, whatever new is coming along, that's gonna be gone? And then it's gonna be housed in the structure? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, because the bottom right looks shorter, looks smaller than the two top ones, which one is it actually, is that all the same thing? Like I say, I'm not inclined.
I think it's just a difference in scale and height, looking towards.
Yeah, cuz it's like, this is small, I like the small one, right, that's why I'm like, they're not all the same, okay. So that's where everything is going, so that one on the corner will be gone?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, alright, that's all I want to know.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
My name is Pauline Colston, and I do live on Carlisle at 2666 Carlisle. And I live the fourth house down from that structure. And sometime right now, that can be very, very noisy. So I am concerned about that. Because if I don't have my air-conditioning unit on, I can hear a lot of noise from that. So if this supposed to be eliminating the noise level?
Yeah, although that'd be, it'd be housed inside the building. And the only time there would be noise is one, when they said they're gonna be testing the generator, or if the power is out and they have to use the generator to keep the underground water stuff flowing. That's the only time in that wall is there to even help mitigate the sound.
Another question I have as well. I have seen a lot of maintenance going on over there all the time with the large pipes and going running every place. Is that going to be, if this going to be eliminated of those items?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, cuz that is, uh, that one is, is time to replace it, so that's why this is coming in place of that, to eliminate all of those issues that do come about.
Thank you.
No problem. Is there anyone else from the general public who wishes to speak to these matters? Alrighty.
Oh, I have samples.
Come right up.
Yeah, there's one more question. How long is it gonna be?
The build-out, no, the build-out.
It's just a shell, really. It's just a shell.
Like most of the work is going underground.
Okay.
So that first row of windows at the bottom?
Yeah, that's, I didn't know what y'all was talking about, I had samples.
And then, for the upper, um, the smaller windows at the top, this will be the,
Can y'all let the public know what you're doing?
This will be the bridge at the top of the building?
Thank you.
That'll be the bridge.
Break at the bottom. Well, it's basically gonna look like, just like one of the houses, house in the neighborhood, it's up, it's a, it's a pump, it's a lift station.
Big house in there, square feet.
This is the white limestone, or the lighter cream-colored limestone that'll go around the windows. And then if you can see at the top where the smaller windows are, there are two lines. This is the break, there'll be the two lines on either side of that. And then we have a sample of the, this might be hard to see, but there is a sample of the, uh, shingles that'll be on top.
On the roof.
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay, this gentleman needs to move, cuz I can't.
So I just, I just want y'all to understand, and my concept in designing it, that was my number-one goal, to make it look like a house. So it wouldn't, I mean, the wall is gonna be huge, but it wouldn't stick out.
I have one question, do you, how long from beginning of construction to the end?
It's three years, three years out.
It's probably, we're guessing 18 months. It's, some of it's gonna depend on the weather. But that's our best guess.
That's our best guess, right.
So 18 months, about 18 months for the build out?
But I plan on having a meeting with the residents in the neighborhood before I actually start building it. So they can understand, we're gonna go door-to-door with flyers. Down Carlisle, and then down John Daly.
Commissioner T. Williams.
Okay, I think the residents, when you say 18 months, they're like, okay, it shouldn't take 18 months to put up a structure. So I think you guys need to be a little bit more specific, cuz I see there's going like three love, three, uh, three floors underground. So I think you need to show that aspect of it.
Yeah, but to ask you a question, less is because there are pumps going in the ground.
Right, but so, that, that, I think,
They don't understand.
They don't, they wouldn't know that, so we need to express that to the public. They need to understand the reason that's gonna take 18 months to go, and that a lot of this is gonna be underground.
So, uh, Mr. Daddell does have the pictures he could pull up, so you could see.
Yeah, that one.
That one.
Yeah, cuz like I said, I see it here, but the public doesn't, so they need to see why. You're welcome.
It is, it is, right?
Is it? Okay.
And also while you guys look for that particular, um, diagram, um, and I basically, we, we understand, but just for the public, this is, this pump is to help remove the water from, um, the, the storm systems during major rain events, et cetera. Major snow events, et cetera, major, major snow melt, et cetera.
We've just completed phase one of the eastern outfall. This is phase two, three, and four.
Okay.
Once we get done, you'll be able to, probably close to 5,000 to 8,000 homes, we'll be able to move water.
Well, that's wonderful.
Right, which reduces basement flooding.
Okay.
And that's the main goal.
So if, if the consultant can just kinda share with the public this diagram?
Yeah.
If, if you could be more, just kinda show them where, how far down into the ground that, that, that project is going?
Yeah, so the building you were looking at earlier is, here's the roof from this top section, here's the roof. And then here's the ground level, right here. So all of this is below. So you can see there's one, two, three, four plates of stairs. This bottom level, or the basin level, um, is divided into two sections. You can't really see, I guess you can see from here, there's stairs here. And then over here, this is a room where the influent comes, where the, um, sewage will come in to this pipe here. And then behind this room is a larger room where it collects and sits. And then there are pumps back there to pump the water from this basin. Um, after we have a large rain event, the water's collected. And then when the rain event dies down, the water's released at a much slower rate, so that the system can accept it. And then it's sent to the Inxter, um, CSO basin where it's cleaned before it's released into the interceptor, and then, and some of it goes into that. So this is a 30-foot-deep basin. Uh, there are four pumps down there, there are two small pumps that will probably be operating on a regular basis. So for you that hears that, you're, I feel like you're not gonna hear it as much, cuz it's gonna be much deeper, and it's gonna be covered, unlike the one, the basin that, or the pump station that's there now, it's much shallower. Um, and there's not a whole lot to cover it. During heavy rain events, there are two much larger pumps that'll be working in tandem, one at a time, off of each other, to pump the large flows from the basin into the, um, combined sewer overflow basin at Inxter Road and Michigan Avenue. That's generally how it's working. Comes in during a big rain, during a regular day, there is always flow. The small pumps are gonna be pumping as it's coming in, sending it to the, um, combined sewer basin. If we have a big, huge rain, it's gonna come in here, it's gonna be captured, and it's gonna sit for a while. It'll be filtered once, and then sit in a basin for a while to let other things settle out over it, be out of it, out of the flow, before it's pumped with larger pumps at a little higher rate or volume to the combined sewer overflow facility at Inxter Road and Michigan Avenue. So that's basically how it's working. The building is big because if the pumps ever need to be worked on, they need to be lifted out of that lower portion and up to the upper portion, and then loaded on trucks. Or if they can be worked on inside the building, they'll be, they'll do that.
Another question I have, cuz I live right there on Carlisle. Is that going to be a traffic blockage? Are they gonna have problems moving into John Daly, off of Carlisle to John Daly? Is it gonna obstruct your view getting onto John Daly? Or it's gonna be far enough back?
Oh, the building, no, the building's set back, yeah, by 25 feet, so you shouldn't have any, yeah, there should be no blockages.
Thank you, because we just got rid of one on Beach, uh, Carlisle and Beach Daly. That building was torn down because there wasn't enough gas getting out on Beach, uh, Beach Daly from Carlisle.
Sitting too close to the road?
Yes, yes.
So right, right here is, um, the landscaping of it, as far as, this is John Daly, this is Carlisle. Right now, you currently have the existing, um, pipe station, but this one's gonna be inside, for those that came a little bit late. Let me see if I can give you. Sure. So where, where my arrow is going, that's, that's where the wall is proposed.
No, no. So this is, the fences along, yeah. This is a fence along the perimeter here, this is gonna be a regular fence. But the masonry, um, screening walls are gonna be here. So this exterior wall is gonna be nine feet high. This is the, um, backup generator, and this is the transformer. Um, so that's just gonna screen the neighbor from being able to see those, so they won't have to look at them. And then this wall around this generator is gonna be nine feet tall to help cut down on the noise, um, when the generator runs once a week and if there's a power outage.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is, the, the wall structure is basically gonna be, is it, is it as high as the actual building structure or close to it?
No, it's, you know, nine feet tall, the building is actually, I believe, 14 feet, so.
So, so it would not even be, uh, it, it, it wouldn't stand out, because it's actually gonna be shorter than the actual building?
It's gonna be the same, right, yeah. That, that was the intent, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, how will it be maintained?
Um, so, on a regular day, there will be, um, as I said, there's a filtration process, a, a very rough filtration process. And large things like trash and sticks and weeds will be, um, filtered out. They'll be scooped up by a rake, an automated rake, that'll go into the dumpster. The dumpster's gonna be located inside the building, um, and then the city will have to, um, yeah, well, they'll have to enter into an agreement with the waste disposal company who will come and empty that. So it'll be rolled out once a week, it'll be emptied, it'll be rolled back in the building to fill up.
So you will have a need to do the back off at all?
Uh, just, once, once a year for cleaning?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what I meant by maintenance.
You know, annual maintenance, if you have a couple of big rain events and like change, but yeah, on average, it's gonna be more than.
I think you, yeah, you would see a back truck up there to clean.
That's what I meant, clean.
Yep.
Just before Commissioner Williams asks her, asks her question, I know we had some, um, residents coming in late. We're at the public hearing about 3700 John Daly, which is the new pump station. So, um, after Commissioner Williams says it's open to the public, feel free to approach the podium, state your first and last name for the record, and ask any question or comments that you may have. Commissioner Williams.
Aside from fencing, what other security requirements are there? Do there need to be cameras or anything, or is the fence sufficient?
The fence, and there'll be gates, yeah. Are you gonna put cameras in? That's something we can do later, but.
I think it's required, cuz I have, uh, feet in the police station.
Yep.
And we have, if you look at the basement, I mean, that we have cameras.
Yeah.
And then there would be lighting to the.
There'd be lighting.
And I wanna say, when you did the DPS station, I believe that you had cameras, one of the requirements where cameras had to be placed in it, that was, that was one of the conditions of the site plan.
Alright, is there anyone else from the general public who wishes to approach the podium and ask any questions or provide any comments right now? Good evening.
It's Keith McLenn, and I live, Keith McLenn?
Keith McLenn?
Yes. I live at 26470 Carlisle, so probably adjacent, maybe two houses down from the corner. Um, I have a question, so when are they supposed to start building, projecting?
Did you hear us talking when you were just talking about?
No, I, I didn't.
We started, we started putting the pipe in here. The actual building probably started in the February, middle of March.
Oh, that's on.
Yeah.
I heard 18 months, so, okay, alright, that's all. No problem. And ma'am, come right ahead and approach the podium, and state your first and last name for the record. Yes, for the microphone purposes. Sorry about that, we're just recording and streaming, so it's just so everyone to be able to hear.
Well, it's okay, it's okay.
Hi.
Good evening.
Um, I just moved here, um, I think in November, yeah, in November. And I live, well, sort of, well, not sort of, I live like right there, that house, right next to the thing.
On John Daly?
No, I live.
On Carlisle?
On Carlisle, yeah. Here's the building, or whatever that is. And then them pipes, or whatever it is. And, yeah, I live right there. But, um, well, I didn't know it was a water thing, but now will it prevent the basement to get flooded and stuff, or what?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, I think they had just spoken that earlier, we, uh, before you guys came in. And they talked about this is gonna help out with the flow of all the sewage, stormwater, flooding, it's gonna prevent all of that. So what'd you say, 5,000 to 8,000 homes, or is it 8,000 homes? 5,000 to 8,000 homes.
Oh, okay.
The whole section.
Alright, thank you.
No problem, I'm sorry, what was your name, ma'am?
Oh, my name's Leah Montgomery.
Leah Montgomery, okay, thank you.
Okay.
What's your name?
Stephen Chisholm.
Now who are you?
I'm the chairperson for the Inxter Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is a planning commission meeting.
So you're the, so, so you're one of the people that works on the thing over there?
That works over there, and get dirty?
Yeah. No, are you the, one of the men that work over there on the construction thing?
Oh, no, not me. No, that would be his department and her department.
Oh, okay, yeah, cuz I see him every once in a while, if I'm in the house and stuff, but, okay.
Yeah.
No, they're pretty quiet, though, it's pretty quiet over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you're talking about some of our employees that come over there to maintain the facilities, check it out, whatever's going on when they get alarms and stuff like that.
Yeah, cuz sometimes they're there like at 10 o'clock.
Yep.
Yeah, at 10 o'clock at night. Now, what is it, gonna be like all, all day long, or all night? Oh, I mean, they're quiet, they don't bother me. The place is really, it's quiet over there, it's really quiet, yeah.
When you see them, they're just doing normal maintenance to keep everything going and flowing. Um, what they're talking about is constructing a new building that's gonna replace all that outdoor equipment you see. So now, if you see any men or women over there, they'll be going in the building to do maintenance or whatever it is they need to do.
What, inside that fence thing?
That, that'll all be gone, this will, this structure will be replacing that fence.
Oh, oh, okay.
Well, that fence and machinery and everything that's underground that you can't see. It's all gonna be in that building, and of course, underground as well.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you.
No problem.
Uh, just one thing I wanna mention, I know, uh, we're gonna try to meet with the residents in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Because this is 35 feet underground, so it is gonna be noisy.
Until?
Once we start going down to build the building, it's going down 35 feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
How deep does it go now, you know by, offhand?
About 26, something like that, yeah.
Alright. Alright, so I think we have two more people that would like to speak.
Oh, no, I'm Darren in Byron Green, we live next door to her, 26645 Carlisle. And, uh, we have several properties in Inxter, but we don't know if this is the only place you're gonna put this, on John Daly and Carlisle? Uh, you're putting it at somewhere else in Inxter? Are you putting it at somewhere else in Inkster? Is there gonna be another station or just this one?
I have five right now.
Five in Inkster?
Yeah, there's five pumps.
Okay, so, yeah, you probably have to let me know where the rest of them gonna be so I can tell my.
They already there. They already there.
They already there, houses like this?
They might not be this structure, they don't look like that.
What you, what you see there now, uh, five locations set like that, separate two, now letting the screws are in the house.
Oh, okay.
But the other ones are sitting outside like that. And, oh, we're sitting outside like that, code A is sitting outside like that.
Okay.
But eventually, we're gonna change all of them.
Okay, so that's whether all the piping that we see going up there on Yale and all of that's for?
That's the piping.
And what happened for the other properties that you spoke of that you have, uh, public hearings and stuff like that would have to happen if something like this were to come, so notification will go out to those, um, homeowners in the area and things of that nature. And then, uh, an additional thing, I know this, I, this is my first time seeing some people's face. We have a system called Code Red and the notifications that go out from the city about structures like this or town halls and things of that nature, if you sign up, you can do that tonight after the meeting is over, I'll sign you right up. Um, you could get those text messages to your phone or robo-call so you could be in the know when a town hall like they spoke of in the next two weeks is gonna take place. Um, and make sure that you, your occupants or whomever can be in attendance to get more information if you desire.
Okay, I know you've seen my face before cuz I'm a Christ Temple City ref.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I know, I know you've seen my face before.
I would say in general, there's some new faces in here tonight.
Yeah, and Mr. Nolan Biden, only I know him, his face. I know he's seen my face still.
Oh, yeah. But no, we, we do have some new people in the audience, so I'll just speak for everybody.
Oh, okay.
The app, okay, so we.
They can do both right now.
Okay.
Say that one more time?
So we, we have Code Red right now and then we have an appli, uh, application for the city of Inkster. So this evening before the meeting is over, we'll get you all set up with Code Red and the city of Inkster app.
Okay.
And that way you can stay up to date for notifications and any means for, and this is for anybody, not just you, this is for everybody.
Okay, well, yeah, we kinda have notification for this, so.
Yeah, that was the, uh, the, uh, public hearing notice.
We'll come right on up. Yes, good afternoon, good evening. I'm Barbara Green and that's my husband there. We're from two six six four five Carlisle. And, um, we're thinking of selling our home there, it's like two doors down from, uh, this new pump station. So I was kinda wondering, and you may have mentioned it, but we came in late, sorry about that. Um, I'm just wondering, what's the construction timeline for putting up the new pump station?
About eighteen months, right?
Eighteen months, okay. And we're going to be looking at selling, um, when the weather breaks, so the construction will still be underway. Um, will the construction be limited to that site or will there be underground piping or anything that would, um, cause the ground to be torn up?
Mr. Biddens or Carrie, Ms. Moss?
Yes.
I can answer that, yes.
Yeah, there is.
I mean, you see it working now on Princess.
Okay.
So there's a pipeline that's gonna go down Carlisle and then also one that'll go down John Daly.
Okay, so do you have any idea when it will go down Carlisle?
Um, that will start after this project is pretty well along.
Okay.
So if I had to guess, summer?
Summer, oh, perfect, perfect, alright, thank you.
July, August.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, is there anyone else from the general public before we look to close the public hearing? Alrighty, commissioners, do you have any final comments or questions?
Uh, it might be for Derek, you did mention that there needed to be a variance, right, for the wall? And then was there something else that, aside from security, oh, security and variance? Those are the two main things that stood out to me, right?
That's correct.
The approval of the special land use, okay. Yep, I'm good.
Okay. Alrighty, if there is no further comments or questions, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now, this is a special land use, so we do have to vote to recommend approval or denial to the Inkster City Council. The floor is open for a motion to vote to recommend case number zero one dash two five, thirty-seven hundred John Daly Road, special land use.
For a new business?
Oh, well, you know what, it's not under new business, so we still gotta take a vote. Site plan is under new business, but not the special land use. Uh-oh.
We should've did it when we approved it, Jim.
Yeah, that's what I just thought about.
I noticed they put them together, they have to be separate. One's a recommendation and one is a.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so we approved, uh, well, we closed the public hearing, but yeah, the site plan's for approval.
We can just add it.
Okay.
It's on there, we just separate them.
Alright.
So we'll create an A and a B.
Cool. Everybody noted that? Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, so scratch that motion, we're down to unfinished business, uh, which is item number six. We have no unfinished business, now we're down to item number seven, new business. This is item A, uh, case numbers SP two four dash zero five, site plan, thirty-seven hundred John Daly Road. Uh, preliminary site plan review, a special land use permit for a proposed upgrade of a utility and public service building without storage yard located in a R dash one B, one family residential zone district. A special land use is required for the proposed use per section one five five dot zero four one C four. Is there anything additional that we need to bring up about this site plan? We just went over the special land use for it, which kinda encompassed that.
You have a motion first. Before we have discussion.
The floor is open for a motion.
I move, we approve the preliminary site plan.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported, is there any discussion?
Now, you can ask those questions.
Was there anything additional that you wanted to add?
No, it isn't.
Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So now we're down to, which would be the special land use.
I move, we, uh, recommend city council approve the special land use.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We also have under new business approval of the twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six planning commission calendar. Please note that pursuant to the city charter, planning commission meetings will begin at six thirty PM on fourth Mondays of each month. Every date is before you all, uh, looks like one date is moved to a Tuesday in the month of May. And if everybody's had an opportunity to review these, just wanted to know, um, I guess the floor is open for a motion to approve the meeting dates.
It's two A's, it should be B or C.
Item seven C, that should be item seven C.
Okay.
I move to, uh, approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six planning commission calendar as it's noted.
Is there s, a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number eight miscellaneous. We have no miscellaneous items. Down to item number nine, second hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing. So ladies and gentlemen, this is your public comment time to approach this body and address us. If you have anything additional that you'd like to say, please feel free to approach the podium and state your first and last name for the record. Alrighty, seeing and hearing no movement. We did have one public comment that was submitted, I'm sorry.
And I ha, I do have a pu, a public comment that was just text to me. Um, the, uh, Inkster Master Plan link that, um, I was given does not appear to be working correctly now. It's asking you to log in, can we get some clarification on that?
Where is that link located at that they're using to access?
It is. Cityofinkster.com forward slash three two three forward slash master hyphen plan hyphen PDF. And I just clicked on that link and it, and it is asking for a login.
Okay, um, we're gonna have to check into that. This, this is on the website?
Uh, yep, well, this is the link that I have, so, and it says Inkster Master.
Oh, turn your microphone on, please, I'm sorry.
The link.
Call, state, state that link, um, the web address again, please.
WWW dot cityofinkster.com forward slash three two three forward slash master hyphen plan hyphen PDF. And when you click on that actual link, it is asking for login information and it wasn't doing that when I first used that link, so.
Is it going to Civic, Civic something?
Yes.
Yeah, it's going to Civic Plus.
Yes, Civic.
Yeah, I think Troy was working on that, I, I had that problem, um, similar with me, but, but not with that particular, um, thing.
I know the, the link was actively working, uh, when we first got it.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. And I did type it in and it did go to Civic Plus, so they are aware, appreciate it. We did have a.
Okay, so that's, okay, so the link that I currently have.
It must, did it change or something?
Yeah, must have because.
But we, we can look into it just to make sure that it, you know.
Yep.
That it's correct, working.
Okay, and we did have one public comment that was submitted, um, via email to the Inkster Planning Commission for tonight's meeting. And this is from Charles Blackwell. Good evening, planning commission chair Stephen Chisholm is a steward for Mayor Byron Owen. And those are all the public comments we have. And we are down to item number ten, adjournment.
So moved.
Uh, is that supported? It's been properly moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Why you read that?